Call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for this pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the July 10th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder, and if you need a listening device Craig can help you. He's up here in the front. We'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the commission minutes from July 3rd, 2018.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $189,351.32.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaw County Juvenile Detention Center report for May 2018, and that's on file at the auditor's report. Item number five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. No questions for staff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number six is abatements recommended for approval, and we have two different categories, one of which is A through N veteran exemptions. Olivia.
A through N is for the veteran exemption. They're all 2017 property taxes. So we have parcel 41781 in the amount of $1,521.19, parcel 48016 in the amount of $1,106.23, parcel 48621 in the amount of $637.63, parcel 57931 in the amount of $1,521.18, parcel 67285 in the amount of $441.77, parcel 70699 in the amount of $1,521.15, parcel 70806 in the amount of $1,521.18, parcel 73267 in the amount of $1,521.16, parcel 77889 in the amount of $560.32, parcel 81978 in the amount of $946.06, parcel 89916 in the amount of $1,521.20, parcel 71214 in the amount of $608.47, parcel 65658 in the amount of $1,521.17, and finally parcel 50939 in the amount of $1,275.31.
Thank you, Olivia. I would look for a motion in items A through N.
So move.
Second with a question.
Motion and a second. Comment by Commissioner Karski.
To qualify for this PT vet, is that a... Are there income guidelines? Is there... Just curious. I see most of them are for smaller homes or smaller valued homes, but at least one of them's over half a million dollars. So what is...
Monica Hahnkamp with the Equalization Office. What it is, it is not anything to do with income. It goes by, they get a hundred thousand off of the value of their home. So if their home was a hundred and fifty thousand, they would only be paying taxes on fifty thousand.
Is there a disability requirement or any vet?
Yes, they have to be a hundred percent.
Hundred percent disabled?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bender.
As long as you're up, I have, I was curious why the effective date was frequently before the purchase date?
Well, they can qualify before they purchase a home. It goes by their letter.
So it goes by the date they qualified?
It's their letter. Whenever, yep, whenever they are permanently and totally disabled, it goes by that date. So if they purchase a home afterwards, then we will go back a year.
Okay.
Additional questions? Did you identify yourself? I'm sorry.
I did.
I'm sorry?
Monica Hahnkamp, Equalization.
Yes, you did. Okay. I have a motion, just doing it for the record, sorry.
Sure, no problem.
Motion and a second on the veterans' exceptions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. The next one is item O, which is abatement recommendation recommended for denial. Olivia.
Yes, this is parcel 86941, 2017 property taxes in the amount of $1,462.93 for David Holliday, and he was looking for owner occupied status.
Motion, questions?
Motion to deny.
Second.
A motion and a second. Additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is a notice from the South Dakota Department of Health for disinterment permits issued for the remains of Jody Sorensen at Hills of Rest Cemetery, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Item A is DPNO number 52941 in the amount of $832.90. Good morning.
Good morning. Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. Before you is a petition to compromise lien DPNO 52941 with a balance of $832.90. It's from an individual who has recently filed bankruptcy and is pending permanent disability status due to medical conditions that are preventing her from working. She is aware that a bankruptcy will not eliminate a county lien and is requesting that you consider her petition during this difficult period. The lien represents poor relief in the amount of $750, public defender fees for $452, public advocate representation for $350, and payments in the amount of $620. The petitioner is requesting that the lien be compromised and released in full with no payment. The fees for public defender and public advocate representation do not include any IvCs. I do have additional information available regarding the, each of the specific fees if you like. More information.
Thank you. Questions for Melinda? Is the applicant present? I don't think so. Yes. Did you want to speak? You do not have to come to the microphone. You can stay right where you are and you don't have to identify yourself. Just talk loud if you want to, and if you don't want to, you don't have to. Okay, that's fine. Any questions for the applicant? Don't think so. Okay. Comments? Commissioner Bender.
I just think that this is a situation where we don't, we don't initiate any collection procedures. This matter will stay on the record, but we won't be sending out any notices. We won't be having collection people call. I think in this situation you have made a few payments and we really appreciate that. If at any point in the future you're able to make even small payments, I think that would be greatly appreciated. But, you know, we have all the taxpayers that we have to take care of, and these, the only way we can help to try to help other people in the future is if we try to collect these in any manner possible. So at this point, given the fact that there's no real property issue here, I don't see any reason that we would go ahead and abate.
Additional comments?
Madam Chair, I would agree with Commissioner Bender. You know, we're not charging interest on this, and again, we're, we're not foreclosing on your house or taking your car. But if, you know, I do appreciate very much, and we all do, the small payments or any payments that are made, and if at some future time it's, you know, you might want to bring it back to us, keep making small payments.
Additional comments? A motion?
Make a motion to deny.
Second.
A motion and a second to deny. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. If you have any questions, you could talk to staff afterwards. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Next we have opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda today. Not seeing anyone moving. Move on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a motion to appoint a candidate for the Planning Commission Board for the remainder of the vacant, vacated appointment, which is July 10, 2018 through December 31st, 2019. Scott.
Yes, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. This is relatively a routine item. We had a Planning Commissioner that left his position as a Planning Director and, oh, sorry, Planning Commissioner, and we have advertised in all the local media outlets to see who might be interested in serving. And we had Ryan Vanderbleed, who had also expressed interest at our last opening that we had in December. And I have attached his information sheet for your review, and I am asking that you possibly consider appointing him, or if you have any other candidates that you'd like to consider. But we'd be appointing for the balance of Paul Cosputh's term, which is, ends December 31st of 2019. So it's all, the rest of this year and all of next year.
Commissioner Karski.
Just looking at the application and very involved, and I'm imagining a younger individual, but involved in the community. How much does this position pay? What do we pay?
Nothing.
So he doing it for truly for the civic service, public service. So thank you for his application and interest.
And I did reach out to him and told him that we'd have a meeting today. I'm not sure if he's here. So, he is a farmer and I know that they are busy. So, he, he's aware that he's up for appointment today and he's, he's very interested in serving.
I think he was here last time.
I think he was.
Pretty sure he was here last time.
I would move for approval. Second.
We need a roll call vote, I'm sorry.
No problem.
A motion and a second.
All right. Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes.
Karski?
Yes.
Heiburger?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Scott. Item number 11 is a brief on the request for the SDRS for a formal review to consider Class B Public Safety membership for the juvenile correctional positions at Minnehaw County Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie, good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. I'm coming before you today because our staff in the corrections area of our building, our juvenile corrections officers are currently in the Class A of the retirement system, South Dakota Retirement System. They have been since our inception. We've done research back in 1999 and 2000 and made a push for our staff to be eligible for Class B retirement under the public safety portion of that. We were denied at that time. There was Senate Bill 35 this year that included language about juvenile security officers, and it made us believe that we may be qualifying under that bill once it passed. Carrie reached out to South Dakota Retirement System and was informed that that was intended just for state employees at that time. She informed them why we were inquiring, and they felt that we should move forward with giving them more information about why we feel we qualify. We're the only detention center in the state that is not Class B retirement. All the other facilities except for Pennington County are co-located with the jail. All the other facilities except for our location are under the Sheriff's Department. So that's how they kind of get in under that situation. We believe we provide the same services. We face the same dangers that all the other facilities do. We've put together a packet of information that we want to provide to the South Dakota Retirement System. What we're asking for from the Commission is that next week we would bring a resolution for your support of us doing that. Any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Jamie. Other questions for Jamie? Commissioner Bender.
This is really not a question. It's more of a comment. Commissioner Heiburger and I had an opportunity to meet with Carrie and Jamie last week, and, I mean, I think this is just really a fundamental issue of fairness and the ways that the laws kind of don't always capture everybody that they should. And, you know, there's no doubt that, Jamie, I think Carrie pointed out a scar that Jamie has for when he was bitten by somebody. We all are aware of the physical danger that these folks are in and experience on a day-to-day basis. They provide a tremendous service to not only the entire community, but to the, to the kids that they serve out there. And so I'm strongly in support of this.
Commissioner Benega.
Oh, I'm not going to duplicate what Commissioner Bender said. It appears to me the only real reason this was denied is that it's a standalone facility versus the fact that it's not associated, so to speak, with the sheriff or whatever.
We believe that that's the reason, yes. One thing I forgot to explain to you too, as far as financial impact on the budget, if this were to go through legislation and pass, the county's portion in 2019 would be just over, or just under $18,000. And that's if all our, all of our staff are approved. We're shooting for all our juvenile corrections officers, and then we're providing information in regards to our caseworkers, our placement coordinator, assistant director and director. But if we can get all that, it'd be great, but more importantly, I believe our juvenile corrections officers need it most.
We thought, I mean, we talked about it a little bit and thought that amount could probably be absorbed in the present budget. So, Commissioner Karski.
Just so I'm fully informed and for everybody else too, I guess, Class B allows for an earlier retirement because of the physical demands of the job, of what you do. And am I correct on that?
Yes, you're correct. What it, what it would do is it would change the amount that is contributed by employees in the county from 6% to 8%, and it would change the eligibility from the rule of 85 to the rule of 75. The rule means a combination of their age and years of service.
Additional questions? This is just a briefing, and so next week Jamie will be bringing back a resolution for us to vote on. So if you have any questions, you can reach out to Jamie again later. So, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item number 12 is Enterprise Fleet Management Presentation. Craig, good morning.
Good morning, Craig. Commission Office. Earlier this year, Commissioners requested that more research be conducted regarding fleet management services. You heard additional information during some budget hearings earlier this year, and as a result of those conversations, we have brought forward Enterprise Fleet Management. Of all the different organizations that were researched, Enterprise seems to offer services that could potentially benefit the county. Wong Neistrom is here from Enterprise, and he'll be able to more fully flesh out those ideas and would be happy to answer any of your questions regarding what Enterprise offers.
Good morning. If you'd start out just by identifying yourself.
Yes. Wong Neistrom. I'm a fleet consultant for Enterprise Fleet Management.
Thank you.
I will go over a few slides before you to get you a little, little idea of what Enterprise Fleet Management is about, and then leave a lot of room for questions, I hope. At least in Minnesota, we're part of the Minnesota Counties Association, which is 87 different counties that, that serve those members. And we're the only vetted fleet services provider into that association. So we have support from the Commission and the Board for the Minnesota Counties Association. And since, before we actually joined, we worked with around 20 different counties and government entities in Minnesota. And this year alone, we've added 10 more. The reason being is that this is our niche in terms of looking at fleet services, is the government and nonprofit organizations. Nationally across the United States, we are the largest fleet management company that deals with government entities throughout the United States. A little bit background about us, most of you know us as Enterprise Rent-A-Car. We're the commercial division of We'll Pick You Up. The reason why we have the number in the billions there for revenue, it's not to brag, it's showing you stability. We've been doing fleet management since 1957, well before renting cars even. Most people don't realize that because of all the advertisements and what have you. But collectively, we love data. We help manage 1.9 million vehicles. So what we provide in fleet services is a data-driven information to look at total cost of ownership on managing a fleet. And then not only advising on that from simply buying and selling vehicles, but everything in between with managing the operating cost as well, and looking at budgets, cash flow, a lot of important issues obviously that are in the government sphere. We work with a lot of commercial companies around the United States as well. In South Dakota, we have over a dozen partnerships on the commercial side. Sonify Solutions is one of our vendors that we, our partnerships that we work with are with around 400 vehicles across the US as well as mainly in South Dakota. Most of you know Good Samaritan as well. We work with parts of Sanford Health. Just informed of the merger today. So, anyway, what we're trying to say is we have the experience and the know-how. Where I come from is I've been in automotive business for over 16 years in the finance arena, and I've been with Enterprise for seven years. So, little background on that. I do have a lot of case studies if the Board is ever interested in. We started out in the large, larger states, Texas, California, New York, Florida. So we manage the whole county of Orange County in California. A lot of big counties in, in Texas and Florida, PD Department, the entire police department in Florida. We do the entire city of Chicago, thousands of vehicles there. So the experience is there for getting that information in the data. And what we found is some commonalities looking at municipal governments is the budget is tight when it pertains to vehicles. They're not top priorities. And, and the department heads are usually tasked with doing more with less. So that's where Enterprise comes into play by looking at how you're running your fleet today and mapping that out with some common best practices that we found in the industry when it comes to streamlining the process, looking at budgets each year to make sure that we're doing the best job possible to have the lowest total cost on running a fleet, but also being able to provide the safety that the community, the county, the Sheriff's Office relies on. So we work with all the divisions of government. The interesting part is our two biggest clients is Public Works and Sheriff's Office. But that's not what we're talking about today, but those are the two main, main partnerships that we have throughout the country first. The rest is a bonus in terms of looking at the whole picture. So what, what are the major benefits of working with the Enterprise Fleet Management Company? Is utilizing a private company like Enterprise. A lot of the best practices is how we model our rental car division. We manage a million vehicles of our own, so we have to be really good at managing vehicles for others because it's the bottom line for us as well from a revenue standpoint. So by being able to track all your operating expenses down to the individual vehicles from maintenance, fuel, resale value, price, payment, budget each year, all those factors come into play. And every single vehicle has a different shelf life in terms of when is the best time to get rid of that vehicle. So that's why the data brings us back into looking at each year planning and budget planning with the counties that we serve to make sure that you're getting the most out of the taxpayer dollars. We'll skip there and I think we jump to the analysis that you all have. And Craig, can you show me where I can get that up? Perfect. One of the tools that we have for analytics obviously is what you see before you. We like to do a fleet plan on a proof of concept with a lot of our partnerships. We do this on an annual basis looking, going forward. This isn't just a one-stop shop looking at what does, what does it look like for the next 10 years, and this is a fixed budget cycle. It's really looking at each year on its own, but this gives you a nice view of the, of the decade to come. What we're trying to accomplish. There's no contract when you sign with Enterprise. We have agreements. We have to earn our, our value every year with you. So you're not locked into a long-term commitment with Enterprise. Looking at this though, gives you a snapshot idea of what we're trying to accomplish. This basically just says what do you average spend to run your fleet today on these 38 vehicles with maintenance and operating costs? What do you normally spend each year? So we looked at the data and the information provided, and then we looked at what would it cost to lease the vehicles on a brief overview look. So as you can see here, the current fleet we're looked at is 38 vehicles. You currently on these last 10 years of purchases, keep the vehicles for about 15 years. So it's pretty much buy it and run it in the ground. And then the current maintenance expense and the average annual miles is 7,300 miles. Typical of most counties, drive between 5,000 to 10,000 miles, relatively low miles. That's common throughout the United States, mainly because you're serving within. The Sheriff's Office averages 15,000 to 40,000 miles a year on average. So they drive a lot higher, and they're generally on a faster rotation. With that being said, it even makes more sense to, to lease if you're on a faster rotation. But as you can see here, what do you do with the vehicles that you do have that are certain age and are 15 years old? We look at proposing a, around a five-year life cycle on those vehicles as well. So if you think about a five-year-old vehicle just going 7,300 miles a year, that's around 35,000, 40,000 miles after five years. And you're thinking, why in the world would we get rid of that vehicle at that time? It runs great. There's nothing wrong with it. That's where Enterprise comes in and looks at the numbers. As a government entity, you have the biggest buying power in North America, most of the time. When you get a, a great buy, let's say on a car or pickup truck, it can be $5,000 to $10,000 behind factory invoice on that vehicle. Because your buying power is so good, you instantly have equity. Literally, the county could put it on the street and sell it and make money. The manufacturers have laws against that because they don't want you to be a car dealership. But the point is you're getting a great buy. If we sell that vehicle at the right time and maximize the resale dollars on it, let's say it's a $20,000 car, and after five years, a five-year-old car with 35,000, 40,000 miles that you paid $16,000 for would net you back around $10,000. You're operating a brand-new car then for $5,000. You have the lowest maintenance expense possible because we all know in the first several years of a vehicle's life, there's mainly oil changes and rotating tires. I, I would think you would agree with that. It's also under warranty for the first three years. They do that on purpose. Usually it doesn't break down in the first three years. You're also getting the best fuel economy, the latest safety features, and the technology behind that under that new vehicle. So when you sell it at five years and only 35,000, 40,000 miles, you're getting a lot back, a small fortune, that you put back into the next vehicle. What that does is give you a huge advantage in, in taking advantage of your buying power, the resale value, the maintenance costs, and the fuel costs. How do we quantify all that? That's where Enterprise comes in with the technology that we have to track all this. Every single department would be tracked, every single vehicle would be tracked to make sure that we're on the right schedule. At the end of the day, if you want to run it for another 10 years after five years, you can. As far as we're concerned, it's your vehicle. We only call it a lease because it's a third party buying the vehicle for you. Otherwise, it's your ownership rights to that vehicle as if it was your own. All my Sheriff's Office drill holes, put cages in it, do all the things necessary obviously to make it ready. They all do that. Public Works Division put service bodies, dump bodies, dump trucks, all sorts of stuff on it, lights on all of them. They drill holes on all of them as well. So it's your vehicle to do what you will for your usage, okay? So what we mapped out here is that what does the county average spend? Well, it spends around $54,000 a year to buy around two and a half vehicles each year. Maintenance expense, fuel, the total fleet budget is around $170,000 per se, looking back at just an average year, what do you spend? By leasing the vehicles, it provides a huge cash flow benefit because you're never going to pay full price for the vehicle upfront. You're only going to pay for a partial of the vehicle and not finance the entire amount of the vehicle. By doing that, you are able to acquire more vehicles that are necessary to, or recommended to be replaced without going over budget. So as you can see in this scenario here, looks at, at the, at the next 10 years, looking at leasing versus buying, and will save you $58,000. The year forward after the 10 years sustainable, once all the vehicles are under the lease program, we should still be around $8,300 a year less than you buying a vehicle and running it into the ground because we're, we're capitalizing on that resale. running it into the ground because we're capitalizing on that resale maintenance expense and fuel economy improvements. The main thing that I've asked a lot of boards before is, this analytics showing you after resale value, saving the county $220,000 after 10 years? It's not a lot, but to us it is. This is over only 38 vehicles. If we prove our value, we'd love to work with Public Works and Sheriff's because those divisions actually would save you similar amounts of savings on the amount of vehicles, looking at it, if not even a little bit more. The main thing that I have asked a lot of boards, though, is, let's say, I don't save you a dime, but I'm cost-neutral, but every single vehicle will be on a rotation, you'll have the safest fleet in the county, that'll be reliable, downtime will be next to nothing, and we'll rotate them out, would you still want to work with me? The board usually says, yes, we would, but we want the savings. There you go. Questions?
Questions on Enterprise. Commissioner Burr?
I have a couple, and thank you for your presentation. You know, we usually think of ourselves as getting a good deal buying on government bids because, you know, I'll just give an example, say the state of Nebraska has a deal on pickup trucks. Can you beat those bids, basically?
It's the, for Minnesota, we match the state bid contract.
Okay, that's a good answer. What about local businesses? Do you try to do business with local companies as far as, or do we always have to bring our new Ford truck in from Illinois?
No, you choose the destination where you want us to get the vehicle.
And what about a brand-new lemon versus a golden Aldi? Your statistical analysis will tell us if this old vehicle's getting 33 miles to the gallon and the new one has a bad transmission, right?
Correct.
Okay, and finally, what about specialized vehicle, vehicles? Suppose I need a asphalt paving machine. Do you buy those two?
We do not at this time.
The mileage is bad on them, anyway.
We work with 32,000 GVW and down, which is like an F-650 and down, so a small dump truck right now. In the next two to three years, we are getting into the medium duty. We're starting to work with some companies now financially that run semi-trucks, but that is on a very case-by-case basis. We are seeing a lot more requests in terms of the government sphere for maybe a tandem or more expensive rigs, but a lot of them equipped for the public works that we do are around 70,000 to 90,000 dollars once it's been outfitted and all that. So, they're running some big dump trucks around the 650 range right now with us.
Additional questions? Commissioner Kersky?
Work out the math for me. Excuse me. If we have higher annual mileage, does the benefit to our favor, or is a lower annual mileage a benefit to our favor? The reason I ask, I know when you did the analysis, you looked at vehicles that were driven less than 1,000 miles a year. Average business vehicle is going to have, you know, quite a bit more, 15,000 miles a year in my case. So, how does that work? I mean...
Yeah, the first answer to your question is, we don't get the government pricing. A lot of times, I wish I did on a pickup truck. That'd be great, but we don't, so we pay more on average. So, the answer to your question is, is there is no right answer. The answer is tracking the information and seeing what the maintenance and the fuel economy and the resale value is on that asset. So, a vehicle, give you an example, might go 5,000 miles a year, which is very low, right? If the market dictates at the numbers of that year replacement, which you'd know in a year in advance working with us because we work with you every single year on looking at the numbers, usually during budget season and fleet planning season, we'd have the numbers out to show. But the main thing is being able to look at it as if it's more cost-effective, cost-going-forward analysis to keep the vehicle for additional year, two years, what is it, or is it better to get rid of it? The major factor, believe it or not, is not necessarily savings. It might be a cost-neutral savings to replace it, it's the safety. Vehicle design has changed dramatically over the last decade. Any vehicle older than 2012, believe it or not, does not have electronic stability control as a standard feature, which behind seat belts is the second-most important safety features based on the president of the Highway Safety Institute. And they actually came out and spoke to us at our national conference and saying, if you're not telling your clients about safety, then you're doing them an injustice. If you can get to a cost-neutral and replace a vehicle that's five years old, the safety feature alone will save lives and crashes and fatalities, as well as economic loss to the county in terms of just physical damage. A lot of deer accidents that we see, automatic braking is going to become standard in 2020, meaning that the vehicle just stops when it senses something within three feet. That's going to be a standard safety feature by 2020 across most manufacturers, if not all. These safety designs are implemented and changed every single year, so if you're driving a vehicle for 15 years old, like older than 2007, let's say, in your fleet, you don't have antilock brakes. We're on the fourth-generation antilock brakes that pump hundreds of times faster than the first generation. So, the vehicle technology changes. Crash tests show an improvement year over year on vehicle design. Side curtain airbags are standard in the majority of the vehicles today that they weren't five years ago. There's so many more safety features on the new ones. And in five years, we might be going all-electric. That's going to save a lot of money in terms of fuel economy or maintenance costs. We don't know, but each year, we're going to look at that and give you the best advice. The county makes all final decisions. We give you a roadmap, but the bottom line is, let's look at the information each year and make that decision.
If I can...
Kersky?
Each vehicle isn't leased for a specific period. I mean, it's leased on an annual renewable basis.
Correct.
And you analyze it every year, is this the time? Okay, so it's not like we go and sign a three-year lease for a vehicle. We're signing a lease, but it's analyzed continuously through the cycle to make, to see if it's time to...
It is set on a term, but it's an open lease where you can exit at any point in time. And let's say after, if we go on a five-year term, if you made payments for another year, you'd own the vehicle outright anyway. You've made up all the payments, so you'd own it anyway. We'd transfer title. If it was better to hang on to the vehicle, most likely it should be replaced, but sometimes it's not. I mean, there's a big swing in the cargo van industry, you know, beginning of 2017, where we moved the recommendation at 98,000 miles to 120,000 miles based on the resale value of the cargo vans, went up $3,000 based on that exact same vehicle. So, it really looks at the data differently. But it is on a five-year term. A lot of my sheriffs are on a two, three, or four-year term because they drive higher miles, but the main thing is looking at it where you can exit it at any time, and there's no prepayment penalty, there's no penalties whatsoever, there's no mileage restrictions, there's no wear and tear restrictions. In our mind, you own the asset, and it's to use what you will.
Additional questions? Commissioner Bender?
I'm curious if you guys provide any consulting or advice as to how many vehicles you need per person, per department, per scheduling? I mean, do you guys provide any guidance along those lines?
Anything you want as it pertains to vehicles. Our team has the analytics and the division to do that. You are assigned account management team when you enter into a partnership with Enterprise, and that's where we meet every single year and go over that analytics and plans. There's a lot more that we run besides this. This is just a sample proof of concept for the next 10 years. We want to go through individual vehicles exactly on what this vehicle, 2012, with 86,000 miles that you're selling, what is the replacement cost, what's the maintenance expense, what's the fuel economy on that vehicle, what does the replacement look like in terms of making a financial decision? By tracking the maintenance costs and fuel economy, we can tell you next year which vehicle should go first. You could have two 2010 Dodge Grand Caravans, and one's cost you twice as much to run for some reason. For counties, a lot of times, we're doing analytics on reimbursement versus motor pool. When is the break-even point to provide a vehicle for employee usage versus reimbursing at the IRS rate? And our mobile app actually has a check-in, checkout system for motor pools, so you know who's inside the vehicle. Are we looking at, what is the break-even mileage? How many vehicles should be in the fleet for a motor pool for reimbursement? All those analytics we do on a daily basis with a lot of government entities, as well as private, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Benicka?
I have a question. I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure it's correct. You stated five years for a term, and it's a lease purchase for all practical purposes, so at the end of the five years, we have a salvage value. Is that true for the whatever trade-in or a continuation of the lease?
There's a book value, your buyout option, right?
Okay.
So, let's say on a $20,000 car, it's $5,000. You could purchase it at $5,000 or make payments for about a year, and you'd own it anywhere.
So, there is a balloon payment, so to speak, at the end to either purchase or frankly, renegotiate a lease?
Yeah, if you want to buy it out. More often than not, you could simply, some of my counties will de-fleet at that time too if they have too many vehicles, and we'll sell it, let's go back to a sedan scenario like a Malibu. A five-year-old Malibu with 35,000 miles on it, we'll sell it for $10,000. That difference between the five and the 10 is the county's money. That's your equity.
Right. So, that's why with your graph, with the fleet mix and the fleet cost, every five years, there's a significant reduction in the lease cost, which is why you have significant cash flow-related positive numbers. So, my assumption again is that at the end of those five years, you're probably keeping a number of those cars, either buying them out or trading them in with a cash value.
Trading them in. And what doesn't show in here, this is very static, this is, everything is perfectly five years.
Yeah.
In real life, that's not true. You'll pull some early, you'll sell some late. The idea, though, is to flatline the budget each year, where you have a flat number, let's say 38 vehicles on lease, it costs you $100,000 each year. That's the goal, because that's attainable, right? The only reason why it fluctuates is the resale value changes, right? So, you might get more money back one year than the other, that changes your fleet budget, but that's a good thing. You don't have excess. But the main thing is trying, a lot of finance and budget, you know, people that I work with in the counties, they want to see a flat-lined budget. They want to provide a lease value to all the vehicle types in the county to be able to not go to the budget, maybe go to the board every single year and ask for three, four, five, whatever, but having a set budget, this is what we know it is, and it's stable. The only thing that changes it is inflation rate on the vehicles, which is 1 and 1/2% to 3%, maybe. But that affects payment very little versus the overall when you're doing a cash purchase. So, there's a finance, cash flow structure as well that a lot of counties and finance directors specifically like to keep it stable, to know where the money's coming from each year.
Additional questions? Commissioner Benicka?
I do, if you don't mind. It appears that you also must do contract purchasing for gasoline and some maintenance-related issues if you're using the same dollar amount for the whole 10-year period of time?
I'll answer that question. The first part of it is on the maintenance piece on it. Enterprise has an option to fix the maintenance cost. So, if you see above where proposed maintenance expense is $30.13 in the upper right-hand corner?
Right.
That's the number that Enterprise can guarantee that you'll spend each, on each vehicle, as an average for the fleet. It varies depending on if you're buying a F-250, has a higher maintenance expense than a Ford Fusion. But on average, we'll guarantee that rate. You go to all your local shops. So, continue to use your local shops. You'll get, you know, you'll just use a card from Enterprise, or it's on the mobile app, you go in, and we pay for all the maintenance, all the tune-ups, all the oil change, up to a blown engine. Everything is covered. There's nothing not covered. It's a blanket policy. The only thing we don't cover, though, is tires, because if you put on a set of tires every month, we'd go bankrupt. But everything else mechanically and preventively is covered, so that's why I can fix it on here. You don't have to. It's an option, but it's something we guarantee, which finance, once again, loves having a fixed budget. This is what I'm going to spend each year on maintenance. The fuel I just used, 220, as a conservative number, this will fluctuate.
Sure.
As gas rise, price rises, reaches $4, it reaches $4. I don't get a deal on bulk fueling. I use 220 to be conservative, showing you that if gas goes up, your savings is more by cycling vehicles with more economic vehicles. I'll give you a good example. The Chevy Impala gets around 25 miles to the gallon. That's an eight-year-old Impala. It's pretty good. The new Malibu gets 33. So, you'll automatically get a fuel savings by cycling the vehicle. So, when I use 220, that's to show very minimal savings because you don't do a whole lot of miles, but if gas goes up to 280 or like it is in Minnesota, these numbers are very conservative. Your savings would actually be higher.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you for your time.
We will send you any additional questions we have. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next one, which is item number 13, Minniac County Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Okay. Is there any new business? Any old business? Okay, I would look for a motion to adjourn. We will reconvene in about 10 minutes to do our budget hearing. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
移到
A motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, so we'll be back here in about 10.